Good morning. I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of April tenth, two thousand and twenty four at nine A M. We are meeting in the San Mateo County Board Chambers as well as remotely via Zoom. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with roll call.
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Juan.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
Thank you Chair, you have a forum and staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox and Gonzalez. Thank you.
We will now open public comment for items on the consent agenda or items not on the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you Madam Chair. I will first call upon members in chambers followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the ante room. If you are on Zoom, you may raise your hand or press star nine if you are calling by phone. And at this time, Madam Chair, we do not have any comments for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now close public comment for items not on the regular agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes for March twenty seven, two thousand and twenty four?
So moved. Second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Ramirez and a second by Commissioner Serrano Juan. Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Serrano Juan.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you Chair, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move on to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please introduce item two.
Owner Ruth and Paul Ward, applicant Karen Friedman, file number P L N two thousand and twenty three dash zero 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 two eight. Location Magellan Avenue Miramar, A P N zero four eight dash zero one three dash nine two zero. Project Planner Glenn Gia.
Okay. Okay, good morning, members of the Planning Commission, members of the public and county staff. This is Glenn Jaa, Planner with the San Mateo County Planning and Building Department. The item before the commission is item two, county file number P L N two thousand and twenty three dash zero 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 two A. Applicant is Karen Friedman, owner is Ruth and Paul Ward. The project proposes a major modification to the previous, to the previously approved twenty nine hundred ninety nine square, single-family residence on a vacant parcel in Miramar. The modification were resulting approximately nine inches of roof height change. And the project is appealable to the California Coastal Commission. As the commission can see on the screen, the project is located in the urbanized, in an urbanized neighborhood in Miramar and is located to the southeast of the Cabril Highway. The parcel is twelve thousand four hundred and twenty four square feet. The project site is on one family residential, S ninety four combined district, design review district and coastal development district. The development is approximately three hundred feet from the short line. The project site is adjacent to other single-family residences and a public park. Okay, yeah, as shown on the screen, to the left of the screen, that's the site plan. The proposed residence can be accessed from Magellan through a proposed drive-through approach leading to the garage entrance. Additionally, the site plan indicates that the proposed development would maintain a compliance setback from water course to the north of the development. The image to right visualized the project design. So basically, the site design hasn't changed from the past, from the previously approved project. And again, the only change to, the only modification to the project is the roof height increase, which is about nine inches. So this slides provides the front elevation of the project before the modification and after the modification. Again, the height change is approximately only nine inches. Yeah, so regarding regulatory compliance, the project will continue to comply with the listed policies, including general plan, design review standards, local coastal policies, zoning regulations, public access policies and the airport land use compatibility plan. Yeah, and as for environmental review and initial study mitigated negative decoration was prepared and circulated for a public review and comment from May tenth, two thousand and twelve to May twenty ninth, two thousand and twelve. As required by the California Environmental Quality Act, the initial study and mitigated active declaration was adopted by the zoning hearing officer on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty two. Two addendums associated with the proposal to redesign the project, to redesign the originally approved residence was adopted by the planning commission as regular hearings on January, on June twenty, two thousand and twenty twenty and December thirteen, two thousand and twenty three. This report serves as the third addendum to the adopted initial study slash mitigated negative declaration analyzing the application for the redesign single-family residence on the parcel and demonstrating that subsequent environmental review is not required. Yeah, so staff recommends that the planning commission adopt this addendum to the initial, to the initial study slash mitigated negative declaration and approve this major modification to the coastal development permit and design review permit county file number P L N two thousand and twenty three dash zero 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 two eight. Based on and subject to the required findings and the conditions of approval listed in attachment A. Yeah, this concludes staff's presentation and staff is available for any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff?
I do. Thank you Chair. I noticed that that the design is factory-built units, like the residence, residence, the garage, A D U. These are factory-built units. Is, is that something that was like taken, done for cost reasons? Or what was the rationale behind that?
Yeah, so my understanding is factory-built housing or prefabricated housing, they're just an option available to home builders or homeowners. And I do not know the rationale behind this, but I do know this is one of the options people often can choose from.
Okay, because this is the, in my knowledge, this is the first time I came across that and I noticed that and I thought it's a good idea. Is the applicant there, I would like to understand from them what, what was their thinking?
Is, is the applicant available to answer questions?
Yes, the applicant is on. They should be able to unmute their microphone.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you for the question. There are many benefits for using prefabricated building. We are able to limit the the time on site for construction, so it's a, it's a good benefit for the neighbors and for the community. So when we arrive, ninety percent of the building has already been complete. So, and we're able to really streamline the construction process, so we limit construction ways, so it's much more, it's a much more efficient way of building. And where, because we're building in the factory, we can have a very high level of quality control. So, so there's, you know, several benefits, we believe, to building in the factory.
Okay, okay. No, no, I think it's a great idea. In terms of scheduling, is that like, does that shorten your time schedule as well?
It does. So our time in the factory is really while we build is only a few months and then we're on site for just a few months. So the site work can happen while we're building in the factory, so that can be concurrent. So it tends to shorten the overall construction quite, time quite a bit.
Thank you, thank you. No, I, I think that's a great idea. That, that's all I, I.
Anything? Any other questions? Okay, so does the applicant wish to speak? You have fifteen minutes.
I think Glenn Gia explained the situation. I, I understand that any change over three inches is considered a, a major modification. For us, this change in height really felt like a minor modification. We didn't change anything in the overall sighting. We didn't change anything in the overall design intent. So hopefully this feels very similar to the project that you approved the last time we presented, so.
Okay, thank you. We will now open public comment for item two. Madam Clerk.
Thank you Madam Chair, and at this time, there are no virtual hands raised for this item and no one wishing to speak in chambers.
Okay, we will now close public comment for item two. Does Director have anything to add?
I, I just want to note that while it does seem like it is a very minor change that potentially could have been proved at the staff level or on the consent agenda, this is a a location of high visual quality and I know that there were, there was discussion of the project at the prior hearing, so we wanted to make sure, should there be questions or concerns that there was an opportunity to express it, but overall staff believes that it really is a minor change. It's consistent with the zoning and therefore we're recommending approval.
Thank you.
Commissioners, want, anybody want to open the discussion, make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Yeah, thanks. I move that the planning commission adopt the addendum to, to an initial study mitigating negative declaration and approve the coastal development permit and, and design review permit as per county file number P L N two thousand and twenty three dash zero zero two eight. Based and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
Second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Ramirez and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Serrano Juan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you Chair, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now close item two and move on to item three. Madam Clerk.
Owner applicant San Mateo County, file number P L N two thousand and twenty three zero zero one eight two. Location countywide excluding the coastal zone, project planner Sam Becker.
Good morning Planning Commission, morning members of the public online virtually. As Angela stated, my name is Sam Becker. I'm a planner two at the county of San Mateo and I'm representing this item today. Item number four you is P L N two thousand and twenty three zero zero one eight two. And this is to discuss a consideration of an ordinance amending chapter twenty two point five of the zoning regulations. This is the accessory dwelling units chapter. We are asking for some consideration on the recent changes that were made to the ordinance based on state law. We also adopted additional fire standards and then there were some minor amendments made for clarity consistency. Great, thank you. I had some general background on this item. Last updates took place several years ago from other members of staff to address some of the major A D U state legislation at that time. This included prohibiting minimum lot size as a requirement for A D Us. At this time also established in our ordinance, the state preemption A D Us, which regardless of other standards, the A D Us of up to eight hundred square feet with the four-foot rear and side setbacks and sixteen feet in height were allowable. And it's also at that time we updated to include a chapter twenty two point five and a chapter two, twenty two point five point one, which is for the coastal zone. This time around, these updates are required based on recent state legislation and the forms of A B two 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 one and S B eight ninety seven. I'll follow up on some of the updates made to the ordinance specifically from that legislation on the next slides. But did want to note there were significant updates that came from that, but there was also updates that came from that legislation that were already previously updated by us in our last go around and that included things like height limitations and impact fee exemptions for A D Us under seven hundred and fifty square feet. So we, we did adopt those last time. They weren't needed to be adopted at this time. Additionally, as part of this ordinance update, we not only wanted to comply with the state law changes, but we wanted to open up the chapter twenty two point five and clarify any confusing items that may have come up for planners when reviewing plan checks for A D Us. Things that led to discussions between us and senior planners on implementation, but also things that may have been confusing for an applicant or an architect to read when they're trying to interpret our ordinance. And last, we made some, some changes after discussion with county fire on parking exemptions and some turnaround access that they were seeing issues on for A D Us projects that were coming for their plan checking. So again, I'll go into detail on these on the next few slides. Yeah, thank you. As I discussed these changes to the regs, did want to note the references in your attachments. So attachment B has the clean version of chapter twenty two point five updated with our changes. Attachment C had the outlines of changes, so I struck through the language that was changed and deleted from the chapter, proposed to be deleted from the chapter, I should say, and underlined the new additions. So going right into some of the changes, for one, J D Us. We are no longer requiring that they include a separate sanitation facility, a separate bathroom, as long as the bathroom is accessible to the J D U. So we would, when reviewing, what we would do is we would ensure that there was internally connecting doorway between the J D U and the primary residence. Additionally, we updated the language in the J D U section to be clear that a J D U also includes the space within the walls of an attached garage to the primary residence. Previously, you just read that it was within the walls of the primary residence, so explicitly adding the, within the walls of the attached garage to comply with state law. Last, we added a definition on multifamily dwelling to the definitions list. And I'll talk a little bit about why we did that since there was a significant update to multifamily dwelling lots. But I did, we did add that definition to the definitions list as well as alphabetizing the definitions list for clarity, reading the chapter moving forward. Great. This is one of the major significant changes that came from the recent state legislation and that's regarding front setbacks. Front setbacks were added to the list of objective development standards that must be waived if the state law minimum A D U cannot otherwise be accommodated. So again, that state preemption A D U that I mentioned. It's all good, that I, that I mentioned previously of it, up to eight hundred square feet in floor area, meeting the height limit for the type of A D U it is and providing the four-feet rear and side setbacks. If those are met, then the county cannot preclude the development of an A D U that is proposed within the front setback. This is a, obviously a major update from the state law. What we did include in our proposed ordinance update is that if an A D U is proposed to be built atop or below an existing detached garage that's located within that front setback area, that we would require a conditional use permit. Unless that front setback provision would preclude the creation of that state preemption A D U. So again, if there was something that, that didn't meet the state minimum A D U that's, that's waived by and is only reviewed by objective standards, we would open up a conditional use permit case and review it. Some, some more changes that I wanted to note. Jurisdiction is prohibited in requiring replacement parking when the existing garage is converted to an A D U. Although we do still have the requirement, which continues to comply with state law for one new uncovered or covered space for every A D U unit created. There is a caveat to that is we do have parking exemptions that would allow an applicant or homeowner to be exempted from that one A D U spot. Things like being within half a mile walking distance to transit, within a block to car ride share. A few different exemptions exist that will remain in the ordinance and still comply with state law. Additionally, in the spirit of talking about multifamily dwellings, the, another change was allowing multiple A D Us on parcels with proposed multifamily structures. This is a change from the existing law that just spoke to lots that had existing multifamily. So now two detached A D Us would be allowed on lots with the proposed multifamily, not just existing. Another change wanted to note jurisdictions cannot deny a permit on the requirement of correcting existing zoning non-conformities for the primary residence. And this would be unless they, they are a threat, they pose a threat to health and safety. So that's something that would have to be determined by planning, maybe fire department, building department upon review. But otherwise, the, the A D U permit can't be held because of zoning non-conformities elsewhere on the property. Just a few other clarifications I wanted to note. This daylight plane being measured from a setback applicable to the A D U. This is something that required an edit just based on discussing with staff, clarifying language that would be helpful moving forward in the ordinance. This does comply with state law. And I also wanted to note here, some of the bullet points speak to the additional fire standards that I mentioned. So for example, after discussions with county fire, we wanted to add a standard into the A D U chapter regarding fire-rated materials for when architectural features on sides of an A D U do not meet the four-foot setback requirement. So this would be things like eaves, roof materials and walls, the county fire, when they review at the building permit level or building permit stage, they would want to speak to fire-rated materials being required for, for those saving the state required for a fee of setback. Additionally, speaking to fire about engine access and turnaround issues that they're having for A D projects. We added a parking, under the parking exemption section of the chapter, we added language prohibiting the granting of a parking exemption if the property is located in a wildlife urban interface area and where the proper fire engine access and turnaround is not provided. And this is per fire code appendix D, something that the fire department was citing that they are sharing with applicants during the review stage. And last, as I mentioned before, there were some minor amendments and, and changes that were made to the chapter, things like alphabetizing the definition section, spelling out any reference to a number, just to clear folks that eighty, you know, spelling that out, so we were all on the same page that eighty is eighty and eight hundred is eight hundred. And, and last, we got rid of all the references of second units in the chapter. That's a former term we use for A D Us. At this point statewide and countywide, we want to refer to them as accessory dwelling units moving forward. And also two, two others that were mentioned in the staff report that I didn't fit here on a slide that I wanted to just mention to you all. That we've established now in practice, the A D U permit for a detached garage is issued. At the same time, we issued a demo permit for that at the same time as construction for an A D U. And also, construction in an A D U does not provide basis to require fire sprinklers for the primary dwelling. So this was noted in the staff report, but I just wanted to verbally mention that as well. So yeah, the, the coastal commission is up to date on where we're at in updating chapter twenty two point five, which is the base side chapter. And we'll be following up with them post-planning commission and post-board supervisors. Depending on the timeline of that takes for this item, and we'll be following up with the coastal commission and county attorneys to, to work on updating twenty two point five point one, which is the coastal chapter as well. So they're separate and distinct due to the coastal act and local coastal policy, so we wanted to work on updating twenty two point five to meet state law and any clarity, clarity required for staff to process permits properly separately in the base side before then moving forward to the coast side. This slide is just knowing, noting environmental review per SEQA that the adoption of ordinances is exempt from SEQA review for these SEQA guideline sections. Last, I just wanted to read the recommendation for the board. Once again, that the planning commission recommend that the San Mateo County, County Board of Supervisors, excuse me, adopt an ordinance amending chapter twenty two point five accessory dwelling units of the zoning regulations to comply with the recent changes to state law, adopt additional fire standards and make minor amendments for clarity and consistency. Thank you all for letting me present. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff?
I, I do, yeah. I have concerns regarding setbacks. So section sixty four twenty nine point one. Accessory dwelling units specifically on setbacks for where we have A, B and C rear set, side and rear setbacks. For accessory, accessory dwelling units created entirely within the space of so the, on the bottom, for all accessory dwelling units regardless of height, accessory dwelling unit may be located not closer than the property line for four feet and for rear and side. So we're moving away from what was before, I believe it was a three for the side and four for and four for the rear. So now it's four and four?
No, sir. It was four and four is existing language in the chapter. There's been no changes when it comes to four feet for the side requirement or four feet for the rear part. The, the change that I spoke to was regarding front setbacks.
Got it. Okay, so how about C with regards to heights?
Can I clarify one?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
It's possible you're thinking of accessory structures. We have a handout that speaks to the accessory structures being three feet away from the three lines, but that's not speaking to an accessory dwelling unit. So it's possible you've had something come before you that was an accessory building that had a three-foot setback. Again, not an A D U though. Just want to clarify that.
Okay. All right. In, in regards to height, so sixteen feet maximum. So because I, I'm thinking if, if we're allowing an A D U on top of a garage. And normally you already have, like the existing unit would be between eight and nine feet tall already. So in order to put a, the second story, you would only have about seven feet clearance for that second story. It seems that it's a little restrictive on, on that.
Yeah, I can speak to the player, a clarification on height. So the maximum height allowed for A D Us is twenty six feet, which is six four two nine point one point seven. Speaks to that. The sixteen feet is, as part of the state preemption A D Us that I mentioned, with the up to eight hundred square feet, meaning the four feet setbacks for the side and the rear and meeting the height limit depending on the type of unit, it was detached or attached. If the A D U meets those standards, we're to push the A D U forward and not review for any other standards. It's meeting the objective standards that mean a state minimum A D U. So that's the sixteen feet that we're speaking to. It's not the max allowed for any type of A D U. It's for a specific type of A D U that would be streamlined through our review process.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, all right. Thank you, thank you. I'm curious as to, is there staff assigned to A D U specifically?
No, the assignments get rotated amongst various staff, although as part of our housing element implementation efforts, we are obtaining a new planning position that's going to be dedicated to affordable housing projects to the degree that includes assisting with A D Us, that that will be A D Us that that will be a part of the assignment. I'd also say that the department has a program to streamline A D U review procedures that there's a state law that calls for building permits for A D Us to be processed within sixty days. So they get diverted to a special review team for A D Us that is focused on meeting that sixty day turnaround time. So that's relatively new program that the department has initiated with increasing success.
I'm assuming the, excuse me. The the state and also our county is is really promoting the A D Us to to help and to meet with arena numbers. And so not expediting, but allowing for the facilitation of these units and just keep trying to keep track of how many application, how many completions there are. It would be nice for us to know.
Yes, that's certainly on our radar and something that I'd be happy to report back to you.
Questions? Yes, just great presentation. I just wanted to point out a typo.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. In the attachment B. Let me see how to point it out. It's page, I think, page eighteen.
What's the section fatal?
Twenty twenty two point five point seven.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Okay.
In section, whatever, C, C and D. You have section sixty four twenty nine point one point thirteen F. In both those paragraphs. I don't know how how to point that out to you. It should be sixty four.
We said this is on two twenty two point five point seven.
Seven, right. And if you go to
I'm seeing a reference to the thirteen F on that page. This is in attachment B, so.
Attachment B, yes. You could go on B or or on C because they are both one with
Yeah. I'm just struggling to find this reference. Apologize.
Do you find section sixty four twenty nine dot one dot thirteen F?
Thirteen F, yes.
You see that?
Yes.
Okay, that I think that should be sixty four twenty nine dot one dot fourteen F.
Correct.
Okay.
Is referencing the parking requirements.
Correct.
And the exemptions, correct, okay.
Right, right. So in both those paragraphs.
It's reading thirteen F rather than fourteen F.
Right, right. Yeah. But it's it's a great report, I think, I think. I really thought it's very detailed. Thank you for doing.
Yeah, I had a lot of staff support, so it was a team effort, though. We'll make those changes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions. We will now open public comment for item three. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And at this time, there are no virtual hands raised on Zoom wishes to speak on item three. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now close for the comment for item three. Anything else to add?
Nothing to add. I I think the commissioner is probably interested in what's going to happen with the coastal zone, I would imagine. You know, state law has put staff somewhat in a difficult position because we have to respect the coastal act procedures and appealability and development standards, but at the same time streamline the review process. So balancing the state's directive for streamlining A D Us in the coastal zone in a manner that also respects coastal zone development requirements is a challenging proposition, but one that we want to address to the best of our ability. So that's why it's taking going to take a subsequent effort to tackle that. And that concludes my remarks. I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Any further questions, discussion? Motion?
I move that the planning commission recommend that the Samatail County Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance amending chapter twenty two dot five accessory dwelling units of the zoning regulations to comply to the recent changes to the state law and adapt additional fire standards and make minor amendments to for clarity and consistency.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner Serrano Juan. Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Serrano Juan?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Chair Ketchum?
Hi.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now close item three and move on to item four. Madam Clerk?
Item four is consideration of an initial study negative declaration and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding adoption of a resolution to adopt the county's twenty twenty two through twenty thirty one housing element of the general plan in compliance with state law and the project planner is Will Gibson. All right.
Good morning, commissioners and Chairperson Ketchum. Will has done all the work. I'm just here to introduce this item. So without further ado, I would like to start the presentation. I'll go over an overview and then hand it over to Will to go into the details. So with that. So just a general housing element overview, and again, this is for you. You may be aware of it. This is just for the general public so that they get an idea of what this is all about. So the housing element is a plan for the housing needed by a community or a jurisdiction. It's part of the county's general plan and it's required by state law. And what it does is it assesses the current and future housing needs. It includes policies and programs, and it has to be updated every eight years. The county housing element is only for the unincorporated parts of the county and must be submitted to the state for review of compliance with state law. So we had brought the housing elements to the commission in January of the twentieth twenty twenty three, and it was submitted to the housing element department. The Housing and Community Development Department on January twentieth twenty twenty three, HCD reviewed our submittal and responded on April twentieth with various changes that they recommended, of which two were of significance. Most of the others were relatively minor. Staff in collaboration with our existing consultants as well as new consultants that we hired to do the sites analysis have completed the effort and now we the in terms of the response to the HCD and that's why we are here in front of you. We are looking for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors from the from you all. And the reason why this is seems a bit sudden is we got a letter from HCD requesting us to speed up the process. So what we were essentially going to bring to you in May is here in front of you right now. Just to quickly touch base on the existing timeline, we released the housing element on March twenty sixth. It's here in front of you today on April tenth. And we are hoping to get a recommendation to the board from you all, and we take it to the board on April twenty fourth. And then after after that gets adopted, we hope to submit to HCD soon after. So just again, some brief items to for the general public as as well. The revised draft housing element is available on this website that's up there in the presentation. The notifications for the release of this was sent out on March three sixth through the March thirtieth through various avenues of publications. The minimum state law is for circulation is seven days. And again, we had initially planned thirty days. That's why we were going to come in May, but since the state wanted us to hurry up, we are resorting to the seven day minimum. We do. We will be looking at comments that are still coming in through the process all the way up to the board and try and accommodate all of that as we move forward. So with that, I just would leave you with the recommendations that we are hoping to get from the commission, which is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to adopt the initial study and negative declaration of the county's twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one housing element. And recommendation that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution adopting the county's twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one housing element general plan in compliance with state law. And with that, I will hand it over to Will Gibson, who will go into the details.
Thank you, Brad. And good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Monowitz, Mr. Fox. Pardon my voice. I I had a cold. I reassure the commissioners. I no longer have the cold, but I have some lingering laryngitis that is an aftereffect. So so bear with me. I'm a little bit hoarse today. So so and also I would just note that I appreciate Brett's credit giving credit. However, this was a team effort. Staff, many staff in our department as well as staff at the housing department, a number of other departments and consultants have worked to complete this work, and we'll talk a little bit about that collaborative process going forward. But but I do appreciate the kudos. So so as Brett said, we received comment from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And we are required to respond to that comment. We substantially amended the housing element in response and the the amendments range from some fairly minor, although in some cases time consuming changes to some very substantive changes, and I'll go through both of those. Some of the revisions were very basic. Additional data and analysis of housing conditions, housing constraints and needs. Additional information and description of the county's regulations and policies. HCD requested more specificity and more detailed timelines, goals and milestones for essentially all the objectives and and programs in the housing plan, in the housing element. As well as more detailed information on the county's compliance with various state laws. And we have edited the document to provide all of that information in our belief. The major revisions were twofold. HCD requested significant new analysis and changes to our sites inventory and rezoning program showing how we are going to meet our share of regional housing needs over the next eight years. As well as a significant expansion of our fair housing analysis and fair housing policies and programs in the affirmatively furthering fair housing section of the housing element. And then we also added a few new policies to address unmet housing needs in collaboration with our partners in the community that are responsive to HCD but may go further than what was absolutely necessary to respond to them. So the updated sites inventory and rezoning program included a comprehensive revision of the inventory and the program to demonstrate our ability to meet the arena, significant new analysis of recent development patterns, trends and types to justify the projections of development going forward. Changes to the predictions of development and redevelopment of existing sites. And we also expanded the rezoning program, the proposed sites for rezoning to residential development to include more sites in more current county areas at greater densities. And the outcome of that is, as you see here, our sites inventory is in the light blue on the left by income category ranging from very low to above moderate, and there are two thousand eight hundred and thirty three sites in total. And we are showing how we meet those in the categories that move across vacant, single family residentially zoned sites, vacant, multifamily residentially zoned sites, non vacant, multifamily residentially zoned sites, pipeline projects, projects that are already underway that are in the pipeline and that will be developed within the next eight years. Projected A D U accessory dwelling unit production, and then the amount of sites we would rezone. And the big change, as you can see, the rezoning sites, we are now identifying sites that will produce two thousand four hundred and seventy seven units, which gives us a surplus in every income category ranging from between forty two thirty three to a hundred and approximately forty percent across each category and seventy one percent in total. So we're seventy one percent above the need that is projected over the next eight years with this revised analysis. And the sites are shown here that are proposed for rezoning in on these maps. The Broadmore sites, which you have seen before, are unchanged. Sites in unincorporated Colma are also unchanged. We have identified several new sites in El Granada. These are all sites that are either zoned for high density residential or institutional uses that are owned by the Cabrillo Unified School District, and the Cabrillo School District has reached out to us proactively with the interest in seeing these rezoned for residential uses. So we've included those with the consent of the owner who is interested in seeing these ultimately used for that purpose. And then finally, we have reduced the sites in the harbor industrial area to only a few sites. These are sites that in discussion with the city of Belmont, we have identified as the most likely sites that would actually be available and feasible for residential development in the next eight years. They are bracketed by multiple projects that have happened or are underway that are high density multifamily sites. The remainder of sites that we previously identified in the harbor industrial area have been removed from the analysis because we determined that they are no longer feasible. And the sites inventory and the rezoning program viewer is available here on the project website. You can look at all of the sites, both by location, but also by characteristics. It shows the current zoning. It shows the current general plan land use. It shows the projected units both for existing sites and sites proposed for rezoning. And how many units by income level we are projecting will be produced by those sites over the next eight years. Turning to the affirmatively furthering fair housing assessment, we've included more analysis and more description of integration and segregation patterns, patterns disparities and opportunity, areas of racially concentrated poverty and affluence, displacement risks, particularly from natural disaster, homelessness and other special needs populations, and more detailed analysis of the fair housing and locations of our sites inventory and the resulting program. And just selected AFFH programs that we've added or expanded in the housing in the fair housing plan in the housing element. That includes consolidation and publication of fair housing resources, dedication of federal and local funds to fair housing assistance and to fair housing enforcement, expansion and targeting of housing funding to special needs populations, funding for large family households, which is an identified special special needs category that we are not meeting very well at present. Funding for affordable housing linked to childcare, various programs supporting development of farm labor housing, the development of multilingual regional online affordable housing programs and submission of an equity plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Some other new programs that go beyond what was requested by HCD, we have proposed a rural south coast housing study and strategy to identify needs in the Pascadero and surrounding environments, Pascadero area and surrounding environments. The condition of housing, the need for housing and how we can improve conditions in that area. We proposed a comprehensively updated farm labor housing study and strategy. An initial assessment of the feasibility and need for a community plan for the Pascadero community. A site by site assessment of feasibility and development of farm labor housing in the coastal zone. Also encouraging the use of local labor and providing publicly available labor resources for development projects in the county. And the creation of an accessory dwelling unit resource center to facilitate and incentivize creation of accessory dwelling units. So with that, the adoption of the updated housing element is a general plan amendment. It requires resolution by the board replacing the current housing element with the updated housing element. As you can see, chapter seven of the general plan. And it is a project requiring environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. We prepared an initial study and negative declaration for the housing element. It was circulated between May third and June ninth of last We prepared an initial study and negative declaration for the housing element. It was circulated between May third and June ninth of last year. And it determined that adoption of the housing element does not have potential environmental impacts absent future implementing actions, which may have environmental impacts that will be evaluated as those are implemented. Uh, so there are two resolutions attached to this project. One is adopting the updated housing element, replacing chapter seven of the general plan. And the second is resolution certifying that initial study and negative declaration for adoption of the housing element and finding no negative environmental impacts. And just again, to note, this was a very collaborative update process. Uh, the planning and building department worked closely with the Department of Housing, also with the Office of Sustainability, Environmental Health, the Housing Authority. Uh, we had consultants, including Economic Planning Systems, Root Policy and the Community Planning Collaborative. Uh, we've worked with partners and stakeholders in the community, housing advocates and others to ensure that the programs are responsive to the needs of the community. Uh, we will continue to work with partners through review and submittal up to the board. And should there be further changes required by HCD after the board process as well, and consider, we will continue to consider comment and incorporate as needed. Uh, and the next steps, again, the Board of Supervisors hearing is scheduled for April twenty-fourth. We would plan to resubmit to HCD immediately after the board's adoption of the housing element, should they adopt. And HCD has committed to prioritize a rapid review of the housing element and get comments back to us as quickly as possible. So with that, uh, staff's recommendations to the planning commission is that the commission recommend that the board adopt the initial study and negative, negative declaration for the housing element. And recommend that the board of supervisors adopt the resolution, adopting the general plan amendment, uh, replacing the current housing element with the updated twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one housing element. Uh, with that, um, that closes my presentation and we'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Um, yesterday we got a letter from Green Foothills about the farm housing element of it. Can you address that?
Yes, uh, so there, there are two aspects of Green Foothills letters. One was urging us to do an early environmental assessment of the, uh, sites proposed for rezoning in El Granada, which makes quite a bit of sense, actually. Um, I would just say, on that note, we're actually planning to, we are going to proceed with rezoning all the sites throughout the county at the same time, but we recognize that the coastal sites would take far longer. We hope to complete the Bayside rezoning and get a provisional certification from HCD before the adoption of any rezoning on the coast side, because that will take so much longer. We do think that early assessment of biological factors on those sites makes sense because if it, uh, if it results, if that assessment results in the fact that they may be undevelopable, we would have to identify other sites in other locations to complete that. So I think Green Foothill's suggestion on that score is a very reasonable one. Um, I also agree that, uh, Green Foothills pointed out that the county has a number of units throughout the rural South Coast that were created on sites that otherwise would not allow additional density and they were, they were created in exchange for those being affordable in perpetuity. Some of them are devoted to for farm labor. Some of them are just generally affordable housing units. Green Foothills rightly notes that we don't always have a handle on whether that affordability restriction is being, uh, is being maintained and that we should actually inventory them and determine whether that's the case. We have been working with our housing, uh, housing department on a project that would not only cover those units, but inclusionary units and other affordable units throughout the county to make sure that we are ensuring that those units which are created under affordability restrictions remain affordable. So that also, I think it's a very simple, uh, uh, a reasonable suggestion that we already intend to pursue and will continue to pursue. And then the, the, the note that there is still a need for seasonal farm labor housing is correct. We, you know, we recognize that seasonal migratory farm labor, labor is declining as a share of farm labor. There's more and more permanence in that labor force as well as a diminishing need for the labor force. So we're not quite sure what the share of the need for seasonally, uh, farm labor housing is. That will be something we will address through the farm labor housing study to determine how, both what that need is and how best to address it. Yeah. So I would say essentially we're fully in agreement with Green Foothills, um, comments. And that reminds me of, of one point that I forgot to mention, Commissioner Ketchum also identified two sites near site, the Cypress Point project, two residentially zone sites for single family uses that are constrained and may be undevelopable. We intend to remove those from the housing element, uh, consistent with Commissioner Ketchum's recommendations. Uh, we did not have the time to do that prior to this hearing, but we would, uh, we would suggest that your commission recommend the recommendations here with the provision that we remove those two sites with, from the version that goes to the board.
Thank you.
Well, so to kind of follow up on what, um, Commissioner Hanson was mentioning and to, uh, uh, on Green Foothills, um, a letter and the way you responded. So are any of those things, uh, do those have to be done before, uh, this, um, draft is sent to HCD?
No, that, that part would, that would be an implementation step that would follow the submittal to HCD and we're part of the evaluation going forward. What we will have to do is we will submit to HCD. Ideally, they will certify our housing helmet and then we proceed with the programs in the housing element, one of which is the rezoning of all of the sites we've identified.
Okay. So that would be done.
That would be done subsequently.
Subsequently. Okay. So, um, uh, just for my own knowledge, um, uh, I, I saw these vacant, single family, uh, residential properties, like on, on all the maps where you have identified of those. Non-vacant, multifamily residential. So what's the difference between the two? Uh?
So the vacant, single family sites are sites that already exist and, uh, you are allowed to build one unit on them, one unit only, and they have nothing on them.
Okay.
The non, there are also some vacant multifamily sites which allow high density residential to allow on them that have nothing on them. Those are the most developed sites. They're easy. They don't have anything on them. The non-vacant multifamily sites are sites that we've identified that have development on them, but it's underutilized. They're developed at a much lower density than they could be developed at. And we have been seeing turnover in those sites and new residential development on that kind of site. So we are projecting that forward for these sites as well. Uh, and then with the rezoning program that we intend to go forward with, we would also be rezoning some occupied sites to higher densities to incentivize that kind of change.
Okay. So right now these, the non-vacant ones are zoned for not being able to build more.
It varies for the rezoning program. Yes. If the non-vacant, uh, the non-vacant sites that are just in the sites inventory portion of the housing element actually are allowed to have higher density residential, they just have it right now.
Okay. Okay. So they don't need any reason.
There would be no change in that.
Most of them.
Yes.
And the pipeline projects are the ones that are already, yeah, in the process.
In the process. Some of them are under construction. Some of them have received their entitlements that are good to go forward. Some of them are fairly advanced in the planning process and we don't think they'll pull out at this time. So those are genuine projects that are underway in one form or another. And the affordability assumptions that are shown there are what they've actually proposed to us as part of the project.
And um, I don't know if this is part of your, uh, housing element, but now eight years is a long time. Uh, does county periodically monitor?
Uh, yes.
And update, uh, or, or amend the element?
Well, so we typically, so in, in prior cycles, we typically do not amend the housing element. We are required to monitor the production of housing against what we've projected in the housing and we do so on an annual basis. If, and if we, in this cycle, the state is starting to take a much more stringent approach to, if we're not meeting our targets, we may be required to make midstream amendments. It's uncertain at this point, but and if we are projecting that certain specific sites will be developed at a certain density and they end up developed at a lower density, then we do have to find substitute sites to fill in that gap in density. So if we projected a site would have a hundred units built on it and a developer came in and built fifty units and they were allowed to do so, we would encourage them to, to maximize the zoning, but if they don't, we will have to identify another site where more units can be built to make up for that lost fifty. So there are some changes that are necessary throughout the process. That has not previously been the case. This is new in this housing element cycle.
Because we also have a limit of how many permits we issue, uh, per year.
Uh, not on the, yeah, not countywide, the, the mid-coast, the county's mid-coast and the coastal zone has a limit for permits here, although there are exceptions for affordable housing to that limit, but otherwise we do not, we do not.
We, we do not have limit, like, uh, on the Bayside and we don't have.
Not in any of the, not in any of the locations that we're, uh, identifying for housing.
Now, do we also include any information about providing infrasec, infrastructure to support these housing?
We have some policies to continue to both evaluate and fund improved infrastructure in the places that we're projecting greater density. As at present, we did assess what are the limits on the capacity. And for the most part, we think that the projected development can be supported by the infrastructure that exists. But there are some cases where the information is a little uncertain. Uh, Northrokes, for instance, the, we know eventually in Northrokes, we will run up against infrastructure capacity limits. We're not sure when that will be. So, uh, our public works department is actually studying that right now. So we do continue to assess and try to address those constraints.
Uh, does HCD require, uh?
They require, they do require us to do an assessment of that, yes.
Okay. And do, do they also look at the past trends, uh?
They.
On a previous eight year cycle?
They do, they do. Um, although it's kind of a fresh start each time, but they will look at past trends and how they compare to projections and use that as part of their assessment of are our trends and projections realistic? We did a very deep dive into what had happened in the last eight years in, uh, in creating our sites inventory and our reasoning program. And we think we really have a fairly, a very strong justification for why these sites will actually be developed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any more questions? I have a couple. Um, oh, just to add on to what you mentioned, I had written to you about the sites. Basically it's two locations, but two sites at each location. So a total of four sites that we're going to delete. Thank you. Um, and, and then I'm curious about the, in the mid-coast, the designated affordable housing sites, which you know, have been in each time. And you told me a year ago, I think that the, the north El Granada site, the part of it that's designated as affordable housing. Um, since you'd used it before, that you couldn't, that, that you couldn't, you couldn't put that forward as designated for to, what does that mean? Is that why the, the whole bundle there is proposed to be just high dense, higher density?
No, um, well, the whole bundle is there because we have been at discussions with the school district and they are very interested in all of those sites, which we were unaware of previously. Uh, that particular site is not allowed to be included again at the prior zoning. We are rezoning it to a different zoning to incentivize further development, which allows us to put it back into the inventory. Uh, if we had just tried to include it in exactly the form, which is a much lower density, uh, than it was private previously, we would not be allowed to utilize that. So you must rezone to incentivize additional development in order to be able to use the site that has been in multiple prior housing element cycles. So ideally the change in what is allowed on that site will allow development in a manner that would, would not previously have happened.
So this, but this won't conflict with the LCP that designated it as affordable housing. It's not a problem to do that.
We will have to, uh, for all of these sites on the coastal, uh, on the, in the mid-coast, we will have to undertake some LCP amendments. That doesn't mean it can't remain designated as affordable housing. It just means we change the densities, which will flow through to an LCP amendment, a fairly minor one. Uh, but maybe Steve can talk to that a little bit as well.
Uh, well, I would just say that, um, it would be our intent to ensure that the rezoning maintain, if not increase the amount of affordable units that need to be constructed on the site.
Yeah, I noticed in the table, you had that area with equal number in each income category. So is, is the intention, well, is there an intention yet as to whether it's a big building or, or whether they're mixed in or whatever, how?
We, we don't have an intention as to the form of the development, the physical form of the development. And the reason that we split them up is just that even if we, we are not, for instance, HCD, despite the fact that we require twenty percent inclusionary in every multifamily project in the county, HCD does not allow us to count that as automatically affordable. Similarly, if we have a hundred percent dedicated affordable housing site, HCD does not allow us to, they do, they require us to split it up. So the assumptions are somewhat driven by state law. We would want to keep that as an affordable housing site, however. But the way we're allowed to project it is little odd.
And I would add that, um, for the affordable housing sites, they do allow mixed, um, units. So not every single unit needs to be affordable.
And my other question, the, uh, South Moss Beach Affordable Housing Site, um, we had discussions about this a year ago about the suitability of that because it had already been, had one go and got dropped, I mean, at the coastal commission. And then, uh, since then, the air, airport overlay has, uh, so I noticed that it's no longer in the current site inventory. I'm curious to know the thought process as to the future of that parcel, how that happened.
I mean, I, I don't think we've said so. I think, you know, pursuant to the discussions with yourself and others, we've decided that as a site account, the inventory development is unlikely at any significant density over the next eight years. We remain unsure exactly what is feasible on that parcel. And I think it'll take some further examination to determine. Uh, we have, we've had interest from one set of developers, but they really wanted to develop in a manner that was infeasible and they, the interest seems to be in the portion that is directly in the overlay. So that's the most available portion, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So it, it's a conundrum for developing that site. Developers are not interested in the other portion which lays outside of the airport overlay. So, so I would say just honestly, we're unsure of what the, the future of that could be.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. Um, any question?
I've been, uh, reading in the news that developers are extending their, uh, construction schedules for financing reasons. Is that going to somehow impact uh, the, um, building? Uh, has that impacted our, uh?
Well, I, I'll, um, respond to that at a very high level and that is that, um, market forces do have an impact on the production of housing units without a doubt. And, um, while we do our best to identify sites that are eligible for development and encourage their development, at the end of the day, it's the, um, development corporations, be they nonprofit or for profit, that make the development occur. So, um, changes in the economic conditions that extend construction periods will impact the county in terms of the rate at which we produce housing units. Um, that being said, um, excuse me, the county has de- dedicated a lot of measure K funds to support nonprofit development. And we are hoping that with the subsidy, subsidies that the county is putting forward, that we can help maintain a rate of production that will, um, will do our best to meet the needs of her population.
And it's, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
If, if I may, I, I would also say we, we've worked closely with developers to try to ensure that both the densities that we are proposing and the development standards we're proposing are those that allow them to make projects profitable in the greatest possible manner, because that is one of the barriers. They need to be able to put enough units on the sites. So to a certain extent, we've addressed it in that fashion as well, but Steve remains correct. It's, you know, this affects every jurisdiction. It's a little bit outside of our hands. We try to subsidize projects as best we can. We try to make them as developable and profitable as they can, so that development can happen. But construction costs are up, labor costs are up, financing is difficult. This is just a challenge that every jurisdiction is facing. It's, it's undeniable.
Uh, does the state, uh, provide funding? So?
Yes, uh, the, um, Department of Housing here at the county gets, um, funding from a variety of sources, including through, uh, federal funds and state funds.
Thank you. Did you have some?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So not this plan specifically, but hypothetically long term, that's where I always am. Are we really looking at where all retail and low commercial will be mixed use?
I, I think in areas that are transit rich, that would be the ideal.
Yeah, I, I, I see where those. The only way we could achieve these goals is to look at those areas and say, that's just gonna have to be mixed use going forward and
I think you're.
Single use is out.
I think you're absolutely right, and I also think that you see the state going in that direction as well, they are passing laws that say you are allowed in commercial zones that are near transit to now build housing and to build mixed use with commercial and residential by right in many cases, I just think that's a trend that is necessary to really accommodate the kind of housing that we need.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh we will now open public comment for item four, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as a reminder, you may use the raise hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone to speak on item four, and at this time, I do not see any virtual handles.
Thank you, we will now close public comment for item four. Any further, well, let's move on to discussion. Discussion?
Um I just want to say, you know, uh excellent work on the presentation and, you know, putting this whole thing together. It's a very challenging, I think, what we have, um you know, to achieve the goal. So the one big question is, um what, what if we don't actually? Uh not that I'm recommended, but uh i- i- if we don't um submit this on time and it's approved by the, by the state um uh housing element, but what, what this, what happens?
Yeah, there are a variety of forms of consequences for not having a certified element. We're, we're already past the deadline and we're already subject to some of those consequences. Uh one of the consequences that uh the commissioners has probably heard mentioned before is the builder's remedy that allows developers to come in and propose development at uh greater densities and potentially at different types than is allowed by our general plan and zoning. Um that's not something that the county has faced to date, um I think primarily it's because um you know, there's a lot of um underlying constraints to development in the unincorporated area related to availability of necessary services, access and so forth, and so, you know, most of our general plan designations and zoning designations are in line with the capacity of the site to sustain development, so we have not seen any proposals for development that exceed what we currently allow, and we don't anticipate receiving any. I think the consequence of greater concern is access to um funding, state grants in particular. As I mentioned earlier, we get a variety of sources of funds that help subsidize um affordable housing development um as well as other um grants that help support our infrastructure development and transportation planning. We certainly don't want to lose access to those state funds, so I think that's um one of the biggest incentives that um we have for gaining compliance. And then related to the ongoing implementation of the plan, as Will mentioned, we have to monitor the production of units. If we're not producing at a level that um meets the needs established by our arena, then certain state laws kick in that allow development to occur on a by right basis, so, and that's already occurring in the county where we have projects that um need to be approved ministerially because we haven't produced the amount of housing called for by the state.
Okay, all right, thanks, that, no, no other questions?
Actually, I, I have another question, this is about um site inventory, there's several parcels, parcels in West Miramar on Alameda Avenue, which is currently a paper street and much in need of being developed as this, as a uh circulation, for circulation in that area because Marotta Road has now been made one way, and then they're, you're looking at making Magellan one way, and it's like I, I um had mentioned this with the uh connect the coast side, if Alameda couldn't be connected and I so, oh, and then at the presentation at the, that DPW gave uh at Supervisor Mueller's office about Marotta Road closure, and they, they said co- uh the connection of Alameda Avenue was in their uh a five year plan, you know, and so I don't, I, I wonder at the uh, I, I imagine there's many reasons for the delay, but as it relates to the housing element, when you put a um a parcel there for development, which, you know, either the county's gonna build that road or the adjacent property owners are gonna build the road, is the thought that, oh, this would be a good way to get the road built? I mean, is, is the economics of developing that road that uh difficult to overcome, or I'm just wondering why we can't get the road built?
Yeah, sure, I, I would say that um, you know, our um designation of sites uh is pre- very high level, when we see a vacant site um that's designated for residential development, unless we know it's got significant constraints, it goes on the site inventory. So the fact that those vacant sites on that street have been identified, there, there's no um underlying intent to, for that to encourage the development of the road, it's just we see those as developable sites that, you know, um should be included in the inventory. Um I, I think your observation is exactly correct, either it gets built by DPW as a capital improvement project because um it's identified as something that's needed and would be beneficial to the community, or it is built by the adjacent property owners in conjunction with development, which happens first. It's hard to say, I do think that um there are quite a number of factors and changed circumstances, new new circumstances, I should say, that um I think are encouraging the county to build it independently of whether or not those private parcels adjacent to Alameda are developed, um just to meet circulation needs. Um but whether or not that happens and the timeline under which it happens is really um something that needs to be determined by the Department of Public Works.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Um.
I have a comment. I'm reading, I'm actually looking at this map, the Adequate Sites Inventory Explorer, and it's a, it's a really nice map. Uh just kind of try to get understanding how to use the map. And does this include all of the sites that have already been in inventory? And how did you all, as, as staff, use this?
So the Adequate Sites Inventory Explorer includes all of the sites that we believe are currently developable or redevelopable as they are zoned now, and also all the sites that are included in the rezoning program that we are proposing to rezone. And you can see in the right-hand sidebar, each of those categories, when you click on the parcel itself, it will bring up a, a pop-up with all of the details of that site, what is its zoning, what is allowed under the current zoning, what the affordability breakdown would be on the site, and then if it's proposed for rezoning, it shows the future density that we proposed to be rezoned to. Uh so it includes everything that is in the housing element, correct? Um it is right now, only you, it's used to inform the public of what we are proposing in a really handy way as compared to just looking at housing element, which is a static map. Uh so hopefully that's useful, it's a di- a dynamic mapping way to see all this information kind of in real time. Once the housing element is adopted and certified, we will actually put that on our public-facing GIS system. So when people look at all the property information that the county produces and publishes, this will be a layer that you can add into that data, so it'll be included with all of our other data in our mapping systems.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, are we ready for a motion?
I make motion. So we have two-part motion here. Uh Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt the initial study and negative declaration for the county's twenty twenty-three dash twenty thirty-one housing element. And also Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution adopting the county's twenty twenty-three dash twenty thirty-one housing element of the general plan in compliance with state law.
All second.
Thank you, that was a motion by Commissioner Gupta and a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Serano Quan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, motion carries.
Thank you, we will now close item four and move on to items five through seven from the director.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum, and uh thanks to Will and Barat for all their work on the housing element. The only correspondence I wanted to acknowledge is the letter from Green Foothills, which was addressed in the prior discussion. Uh we appreciate their input and will be certain to address the points they raise as we move forward.
If I could go, go ahead, comment on that. Um no, our job is, is to decide on facts. And we get a lot of emotion, but I can't vote on emotion, I can acknowledge it, understand it, and empathize with it. But I really appreciate the time, my entire time on, on the commission with people like Green Foothills who submit very detailed facts that we can deal, think about, and that I may have missed. And many times, these things change how I view a project, so I'd like to give recognition to those people who take the time to put forward with facts so I can make my findings.
Yes, agreed, thank you for those comments, I think staff feels the same way. Uh so moving on to item six, uh regarding the next meeting, uh which will be on April twenty-fourth. Um there is no study session planned, we do have two items on the agenda. Um one is a general plan conformity for mid peninsula open space district to acquire a sixty acre parcel on La Honda Road. And another, uh the other project is coastal development permit and other permits for El Granada Elementary School. They have a modernization project where they'll be installing um about nine thousand square foot building that will house seven new classrooms, three bathrooms. They're also uh renovating and relocating some other classroom buildings and doing parking lot and landscape improvements. So um that concludes my report on our next meeting, moving on to item seven, the Director's Report. Uh I wanted to let the Commissioners know that yesterday, Board of Supervisors meeting, there were two contracts approved related to uh the Pesca Dero Fire Station and Waterline Extension. There was a contract approved for an architecture firm to start working on the design for the new fire station, and there was a contract with an engineering firm to help with the uh final design and the construction bid process for the waterline extension. The next step with regard to those projects is um to get uh the process with LAFCO underway, LAFCO being the Local Agency Formation Commission, who will need to approve the annexation of these parcels to CSA eleven. So staff is working on getting all those application materials to LAFCO. On a happy note, I'm pleased to announce that uh we have a new building official that will begin on Monday. His name is Christopher Ragland, he's coming to us from the city of Oakland. Um the Commissioners may or may not know that um we've been without a permanent building official for, I want to say, uh over six months now. Uh we've uh temporarily filled that position with a contractor by the name of Stephen Lau, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank him for the great job he's done in uh filling the gap while we recruit for this new position. Um you know, the building official doesn't often come before the Planning Commission because they're so focused on building permit process, inspection process, FEMA compliance process, make sure building side of the house is running as smoothly as possible, but uh I can't um state how important that position is in terms of the department's overall functioning and in uh facilitating a smooth process for development. So uh really looking forward to Chris's start and uh hope to have the opportunity to introduce him to you in the near future. Finally, um before the meeting started, we were talking a little bit about the fact that uh the new building, the new county office building is nearing completion. Many departments and offices that are currently located in this building will be moving over to that building. Uh that includes the Board of Supervisors Office, um I understand there's a beautiful new uh board chambers in the building. I don't know what the timeline is for the board to make the move into the new chambers. Um but I will find out, and I'll also find out um what the schedule will be for the Planning Commission hearings to be relocated over there. I don't know for certain that that's gonna happen, that's my assumption, so I need to confirm that assumption and uh I'll be sure to keep you up to date. Uh a related um move that you and the public should be aware of um is that the Planning and Building Office will be temporarily relocated to this building on the third floor is what our expectation at this moment. Uh the reason for that is because um the building we're currently in has asbestos tiles in the ceiling and um we've been unable to move forward with significant remodel of the floor because of the presence of that asbestos, so that will be remediated and we'll have an opportunity then to remodel that um office to meet our long-term needs. But we're gonna have to move out for potentially up to a two-year timeframe for them to complete that abatement and do the remodel. So we're working on all those plans, we anticipate that move will happen towards the end of the calendar year. Uh it shouldn't have any real impact on the commission and hopefully just minimal impacts on our customers. You know, the one downfall I see of moving here, over here, is having to go through security. Um but, you know, um with COVID and following, we've really been able to um complete a lot of the work that we do with our customers online, virtually. I think that will continue to be an important tool for us moving forward. And of course, we're always available to um interact in person, and that will continue just at a different location. Um so that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a, I'm going to take the opportunity, since Barat's still here. Um somebody asked me when the public outreach might start for Plan Princeton, is there any update on?
I, I'll uh give it at a high level and, Barat, if I miss anything, jump in, um we have um been looking for a consulting firm to help with that outreach, um we have um tentatively selected uh Pathways Consulting um to assist us with that outreach. We are in the process of contracting with them, and once that contract is completed, we're probably, I want to say about two months out um from actually being in a position to do the outreach. Uh one of the reasons why we like Pathways is um they've got a focus on climate change and sustainability. A prior county employee who worked in the Office of Sustainability, Hillary Papendick, also a former Coastal Commission employee, works with Pathways, and uh we feel that they will do a great job of communicating the issues related to climate change and sea level rise with the public and provide a um interactive way for the um community members to provide feedback on the different choices that will need to be made to tackle this challenge, so uh we're looking forward to that. Doesn't look like Barat has much more to offer.
Well, that's all very encouraging, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um the uh. Speaking of Princeton, so the was the kayak club proposed at the end of West Point on the shoreline in Princeton? And I, I, online, it doesn't show any activity since last summer, but they pulled in a prefab building a couple of weeks ago and I just put it there and who do you report? I have, I think I copied you on an email about that.
I did see that email and we are going to investigate what's happening there. I'm not aware of any building permit being issued to allow for the placement. While you don't need a building permit for a prefab unit, you do need a building permit for the foundation and connecting utilities. And so we are gonna investigate that and take appropriate action.
They had, I think when these current property owners purchased it, I think you told them this is gonna have to be something that's easily moved away due to the location. And, and they had applied for coastal development permit for this prefab building, but I don't know. The person who lives nearby who told me about it, wanted to know how, was that illegal and how to report it? And I tried to advise her, but she seems to be unable to get through the access wall by phone or online. And, and I don't know what, what it is. She said the recordings said, was it a zoning or a building issue? And I said, I don't know. I didn't know there was a difference. I don't know.
Yes, I apologize if that's been confusing to this resident. And the, the reason we distinguish between zoning and building violations is because if there's an active building violation, we may need to send an inspector out to determine, you know, whether or not the constructions pose any safety risks, stability standpoint, whereas our code compliance unit is generally more focused on zoning violations where you might have a, a new use move in that's not allowed by the zoning or you might not be managing your property in a manner that it protects the health and safety of the surrounding residents. So that's how we determine who's gonna report and investigate. Building violations have been generally under the, the building division to inspect while zoning violations have generally been under code compliance unit. I, I appreciate that this might be confusing to the general public and so. What, it, it would be both. It will be both. The, the two questions that need to be answered are, was the coastal development permit approved? I know there was an application.
No, it hadn't been approved, at least not, at least not on the online permit site.
So that, that's the first question. And if they have installed a building without getting a coastal development permit, then yes, that is a zoning violation.
That's zoning, okay.
As well as a building violation, because you would need a building permit to connect the utilities. So sometimes this distinction between zoning and building is not really all that relevant. And I'll work with staff to make sure that's not impeding people's ability to report violations because we can figure that out on the back end. The important thing is that the interested public feel like they're able to report something that they believe is suspicious and we will take all such reports and respond accordingly.
Yeah, I wanted to help her out because she seems to generally want to learn how to do things.
Sure. Well, you can let her know that she can report it under both zoning and building and not to worry about that distinction moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions, comments further than we are adjourned? Thank you very much.
Thank you.